Okay, please, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is our regular work session, City Council Meeting, February the 5th, 2015. If you would, please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow. Father, we thank you for this evening, we thank you for all that are here and those that we ask that you watch over those who are sick and unable to attend, we ask that you be with us as we make these decisions tonight and go with us throughout the remainder of this evening, all these things we pray.
Welcome everyone here. So you think, one of the first things we have, we have proclamation for the Arbor Day, which is coming up on February the 20th, which I will read, don't think anyone's here to accept the proclamation, but we'll go ahead and read it. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas city trees add the soft touch of nature to our busy lives, they cool our cities, fight pollution, conserve energy, give wildlife a home, and make our neighborhoods more livable, and whereas the trees on city property along streets and in parks are an essential part of the urban forest, to keep these trees healthy and abundant, our city organized a program for their care, we have an annual action plan to plant and prune the city trees and to maintain their health, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of Canton has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways, now therefore what be resolved, IG Hartgood, Mayor of Canton, to hereby proclaim Friday, February the 20th, 2015 as Arbor Day in the city of Canton, and I urge all citizens to make a difference by planting and caring for trees in your yard and in your neighborhood, and by supporting your city's, city government's community forestry program. Okay. I would assume this will go back to our Tree City Commission. Yes?
I would say one thing, I, Tree City is a very important committee, I've served on that, back when we all served on lots of committees for about four years, and really had a lot of people that took advantage of getting trees for almost nothing and planting them, and it really has beautified the city of Canton, and I guess in particular, I was riding through late last night to the city, and of course, we know every ever Christmas lights up, but I was looking at the lighting that we had out there, and it was just beautiful. I thought, you know, it really has beautified our city, the trees and the lighting itself, just wanted to say that, because I, you know, sometimes you get so used to seeing the forest, you don't see the trees, I saw the trees.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. About a second.
Second.
All in favor signify saying aye. Prose no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, also in your agenda package, you have the minutes from the January 22nd, 2015 meeting, are there any changes or corrections to be made to those? If not, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
So.
All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Prose no. All members voting for the motion. You also have in your agenda package, the December 2014 financial statements, this is for your informational purposes only, are there any questions or comments regarding that? Mr. Mayor?
One question, Mr. Mayor, on page eight on the rural car tax proceed revenue, December $723, just a question, I know that the last meeting we had, we had not received any from enterprise, I just want to update for that.
We have not, and I've instructed the code enforcement officer to pay a friendly visit and remind him that those taxes are due. Okay. All right, 10 minute public interview period, Jim, stop. Let's just have Ann Irie on here, too. Moral support.
That's right. And a little show and tell, too. Thank you. The step at South Growlers wants to thank you for supporting the businesses in downtown Canton, and it's been an exciting six months that we've been open, and we're happy to share that we've served over 1,600 visitors in our store, and many of them are repeat customers, and many of the customers that are coming in are learning, are rediscovering historic downtown Canton, because they didn't know it was down here, and we'll let them know, and next thing you know, they're patronizing the other businesses downtown. So as any growing business, South Growlers is looking to enhance our customer experience and provide additional services and product offerings, such as private events, we have beer and wine appreciation clubs that exist, for example, in Soleil, that are looking for these events, like food pairing events, we also have things what we refer to as tap takeovers, where a brewery will come in and we will put multiple beers on tap, and basically they take over a section of our taps, and we would like to be able to have sample flights of these, and the way the current ordinance is written, we're limited to four two-ounce samples, and in some cases, these brewers have more than four samples. Also like to be able to do a larger growler size, the reason we want to do this is one that we were allowed to do a 32 and a 64 ounce, but we'd like to go to a 128, and the reason for this is there's been products coming out. and provide additional services and product offerings, such as private events. We have beer and wine appreciation clubs that exist, for example, in Soleil, that are looking for these events, like food pairing events. We also have things what we refer to as tap takeovers, where a brewery will come in and we will put multiple beers on tap, and basically they take over a section of our taps, and we would like to be able to have sample flights of these. And the way the current ordinance is written, we're limited to four two-ounce samples, and in some cases, these brewers have more than four samples. Also like to be able to do a larger growler size. The reason we want to do this is one, we were allowed to do a 32 and a 64 ounce, but we'd like to go to a 128. And the reason for this is there's been products coming out for the June timeframe that's going to allow our clients or customers to be able to take a larger amount of beer and be able to keep it for a longer period of time. These growlers actually have CO2 cartridges built into them, and allow the carbonation to stay and allow the beer to stay fresh for longer periods of time. And the price point of that product, it makes it more economical for them to get a larger amount of beer than to get a smaller amount of beer. So we'd like to be able to do that. So with these things in mind, we're requesting some modifications to the current ordinance to allow us to have a flexible sample size. Now, in conjunction with that, we also want to increase the maximum amount from an eight ounce to a 16 ounce, and I'll give you an example of why. If we have a food pairing, and we have four courses to pair food, if we do four four-ounce samples, we're at 16 ounces. Right now, we're not allowed to do that. We'd only be able to do four two-ounce samples, and I don't know if you've ever had a pairing with a food, a two-ounce sample just doesn't work well for that event. I'd also like to have the ability to charge for some of these events. I'm not sure how that would work, but I know that some other cities and growler shops are able to charge for the samples. They wouldn't necessarily charge for everyday samples for growlers, but on these events, we'd like at least the option to be able to do that, and that, that would be under section 6389, serving limitations charge. I've actually added another item here, in addition to what Larry had sent, and I don't know where this lies in the ordinance, or if it's even possible. When we have citywide events, especially First Fridays, and that's really our target, one of the things that we would like to be able to do is that have that, the tent that we have there, because right now, all we do is send people to our shop, because we can't do anything there. We'd like to be able to have pre-filled, sealed containers of our growlers that we could provide at a tent, and, and I don't know what would be required to do that, but I'd maybe have our tent be an extension of our retailer store somehow, to where we could be able to do that. It wouldn't be serving, because they would be sealed containers, and they would be plastic on top of that. That's something I'd like to have considered. And we do want to assure the council here that we do not want Stauts Growlers to be a sit-down drinking place. We do not want that. So we just want to have it, have a better opportunity to serve our customers' needs. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Anything? Well, we're going to, this will be brought up a little later in our agenda as well for any discussion that they have, so if you're still around, we'll, we may have some questions at that point.
All right, thanks.
I'm sorry, John, you have?
I have one question. Is, is the CO2 cartridge going to be available only on the one gallon, or on smaller?
There, there's two sizes, the 64 and the 128, but the price point of these products are not, they're not cheap. And so, and the 64 ounce, typically those don't last that long anyway, because there's really only four pints in the 64. And to, only limited to the 64, I feel that there might not be a market for that one. But if you expect it to be 128, where it could still last a week, weeks' time, or even longer for somebody, then it, it might be more cost-effective to do that.
When are, when are those going to be available?
For the public, they should be coming out in June. June delightful.
Well, we'll have some more discussion a little later, and we'll get that on the agenda. Thank you very much. That's all we have on the public input period, so we'll move along. Under O Business, we have the update on city goals. Master plan for downtown city, entire city. Ms. Grant, you have anything?
Ms. Rodriguez.
I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Grant and I talked, and we're excited about the possibility of receiving our LCI grant, but we have not heard yet if we have received it. Mr. Thomas and Mr. Patton have assured us that they'll let us know as soon as we get it. I've made some plans to talk to cities that are county seats. We're a county seat, so we have limitations with the attorney's office and the courthouse here. So I wanted to talk to other county seats, DEA director, Main Street director, to see how they function with the courthouse and the lawyers in their downtown. And I want to talk to the ones who are not doing well, and those that are succeeding. I, I want to know from the ones that are not doing well, what their struggles are, what their roadblocks are, and what, how they think they can overcome these, what they're doing to overcome them. And of course, I want to glean as much information as possible from the ones that are succeeding. So I plan at this point to talk to Eljay, Jasper, Marietta, McDonough, Griffin, Delanega, Rome, Cartersville, Stockbridge, even though it's not a county seat, but it's got a very active community, Macon, Athens, and Calhoun, along with getting information and picking the brain from the State Director of the Downtown Development Community Affairs.
Good, I figured.
So those are our plans at this point.
Very ambitious, sounds good. Anyone else? Okay. Economic development, I don't have anything to report, other than it looks like we're going to get a $10 million school board building somewhere in our city, I'm not sure exactly where, but it looks like it's going to be one, one built. Then, management and parks, Mr. Huffman is not, not here tonight. Debt reduction, do you have some?
Yeah, I can just say that Etowah Park is open from sunrise to sunset. There is to be no team sports on the main field, either practice or games at this time until that side sets, and, but it is open for use. The bridge, the trail is not finished at the end, so the bridge is closed off at the end before the trail between Etowah and Heritage goes. The March agenda, we will be putting on the agenda a proposal to finish that trail.
Anything on debt reduction, anything else on it, other than what we've talked about?
Before paying our bills.
That's right. We're reducing the debt. Absolutely. And at the next, next meeting, I'll, I'll be able to show you by how much, and I think it's very dramatic, sadly. Okay, item B, under O Business, this is the first reading of the Historical Preservation Ordinance to establish a Historic Preservation Commission in its historic district, and facilitate the historic preservation of included properties. Ms. Cummins, you are?
Aye.
Patton, have anything on that?
Mr. Patton is not here, and because it is such an extensive package, I wanted to suggest that instead of having a first reading at this point in time, that we pull it off and have a separate work session to thoroughly discuss what we have.
I, I certainly agree with that, because I think it's, there's a lot of information in that package that we, we've got on that, and I think it's going to take, take a little bit of effort. I understand I've been trying to read through that, and I've got some questions and, and some things that I'm not, I'm not really sure about, even though, you know, the concept and the overall intent is certainly good, and I think we ought to be looking to adopt something, but we, I think we really need to look at the detail of what's in, what's in that ordinance. Okay. I see review and discussion of new council chambers renovation, Mr. Cummins?
Yeah, the reason I have this on here is just to give you a brief update. I hope to have at the next meeting a complete analysis. We have three major issues in the council meeting room, one which we're well aware of is the acoustics. We will have a recommendation of the first step to undertake at the night, the meeting of the 19th, relative to acoustics, to get that problem resolved. The other two issues that we have are lighting. The lights, the LED lights are going to be replaced by the manufacturer. The installer of the LED lights lost his certification with the manufacturer because of the installation. We don't know yet who we're going to be able to hold accountable for correcting and reinstalling the new lights when they do come. They're burning out quickly, and it's a problem. There's no heat shields up on, should have been included in the design specs, heat shields on the lights. The other problem, which has come to light recently, is the benches. It appears that when they removed the benches, because those benches are so old, they should have used a numbering system of which leg went to which bench, and they didn't do that, as far as I can tell. And so they just took them apart, they, we don't know if they stored them in a cold, dry area, but we're getting splits in the benches, and we have to address that, because some of the legs are breaking, because they don't fit exactly, because they weren't matched. So that is the last issue. We should have more information on the 19th of how we're going to address that problem.
Guys, thank you. Item D, updates and discussion of the signage on Old Ball Ground Highway. Goodman, do you have anything else on that at this point?
Yeah, a brief update. As you may recall, we were looking at the possibility as a first, first phase solution of clearing some of the volunteer pines that had grown up along that slope, along the roadway. When we were looking to move forward with that, it was actually determined that that roadway was actually Georgia DOT roadway and not the city of Canton, so we finally took us, took us a while to determine who to contact about clearing those pines, and we, and we got that contact. And then, Mr. Patton got information from them about protocol for clearing the pines, and actually received some information that any non-hardwood tree in excess of four inches in diameter, there was actually a fee or fine of 150 bucks to remove them. And so Steve Green actually walked that 500 feet and counted 232 trees that were over four, four inches, which if you do your math, it equates to over $33,000. Just as of today, however, I contacted Representative Jeff Lewis, who is DOT District Representative assigned to us, and he has offered to assist us with this matter and get back to us very quickly on this, and offers a solution, and hopefully that solution is that we can wait to see. So I'll hopefully can report back on that in the very, at the next meeting, if not before, so.
Okay, thank you.
I did speak with the, one person must be the owner there, and he's waiting for us to get some more information, get back there. He's still interested in it, though.
Okay, good, yeah, all right, thank you. Okay, the discussion of the water deposit refunds, I brought to the council just for discussion purposes a month or so ago, and the idea that perhaps we should look at refunding water deposits to the homeowners. As it is now, of course, if someone moves into our city and, and they pay their $60 or whatever, if a deposit, I think it's 60, unless they move out of our city, they never get it back. I mean, it's just there forever. Currently, we have a total of about $510,000 worth of deposits on, on hand for water customers, of which about $285,000 is attributable to owner accounts, and about $215,000 to a tenant account. Some of these go back in, from 1957 through the 70s, two, there are two $5 deposits, one $10 and one $15 deposit. If I, if I calculated my HP12C correctly, a $5 deposit in 1957, with certain assumptions, would be worth about $150 today. So it's, that's, that's my, that's my number, that's not Nathan's, okay? It's going to be, it's going to be in the ballpark, though. But anyway, what, I, I think the idea is that if we have a homeowner who has a, a good track record payment history, they ought to get that money back. Go ahead and get that money. So I would, what I would like to do is, I would like to ask our, our staff to come back with some recommendation and procedure that would allow us to do that, and hopefully then the council can make the determination if that's what you want to do. Okay? Okay. All right, let's move along. Under new business, we have discussion of Stauts Growlers requesting in current ordinance to increase maximum amount of taste from eight to 16 ounce per day, allow charging fees for taste, and allowing larger growler size. Does anybody have any questions about that now? I had something I was going to ask our attorney about that, in a... We have under, some of the information we have here says private events such as beer and wine appreciation clubs that already gather in communities throughout Canton. Could they not do that anyway? Because you don't have private clubs anyway? I mean, without changing the ordinance, either.
I'm not sure that Stauts could do it, though. They, they want to host the club. If you do it in your home, I don't think there's a problem with it. I don't, I don't think we would.
But if it's private, is it not private? I mean, that, to me, is it's private, it's private.
Well, we have a definition of private club in our ordinance, I'm sure.
Oh, okay.
That they probably wouldn't, because they're a business, they wouldn't.
They have a license to distribute alcohol a certain method, and they're going to change it, so I think we probably have to change the rules to accommodate that. Seems logical. Anybody else wouldn't have a rule applied to that?
But do you have to have a license to serve anything to, in a private party?
No, it depends, if you try to do that.
But if you, but if you collect money for it?
If you're the business to be in.
Yeah, if you're in Canton, of course, you're in Canton. Canon, Canon Park, I don't think that's a, yeah, there's certain places you can't do that.
Okay, okay. Is anybody had any, any, I certainly don't have any problem with the larger containers, you know? I mean, people can go buy kegs now, it's a lot more than a gallon, you know? Ms. Grant?
Yeah, I, I don't really don't have, I don't really have a problem with any of these changes as proposed. I mean, one pint of beer per day is not, is not an issue, I don't think, and I think also Mr. Pujo had sent the information from Gainesville. You know, the reason that they're changing that is because of, you know, the, the emergence of growlers and craft breweries, and so it is a big, and they're, you know, they're doing it and updating their ordinances to cause, you know, it's a huge economic development tool, and then, and I think it is, and I think Stauts is, in six months, has brought, you know, 1,600 people in, in downtown, and, you know, I, I think it's pretty minor changes, and I'm, I'm in support of it, so.
Does that count some people that might have been in more once?
Yeah.
No.
I'm just kidding. Okay.
I, I had one thing, you know, when I, when I first heard about this about a month ago, I was kind of against it, but I went over, Irene explained it all to me, and she showed me the glasses, everything, and I really wanted to support it, so.
Very good, okay. So this is the first reading, and?
We don't have an ordinance yet, yeah.
Don't have an ordinance on that, okay.
Something we'll have to do in March.
Okay, so the first reading will be in the work session in March?
Yeah. I'll prepare an ordinance.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. All right, thank you.
One thing, I did mention that additional thing regarding the ability to classify our tent in an event like First Friday as an extension of the retail, to be able to provide sealed plastic growlers, is that something?
Right, is there, is there, like on a First Friday event, is there any reason that they could not?
I, I think we would just have to say they can.
I mean, some, you know, right now, they sell beer on the sidewalk.
Right. What then we have to do now is, we have a tent, we send them down 100 feet, they go get it, they come back. I like the opportunity to be able to say, we have pre-filled ones of some popular ones, and if they want that one there, they can just get it. and if they want that one there, they can just get it right there. It would still be sealed, it'd still be.
I think what we could do is, we could, we could say, I've been reading everybody's growler ordinances, because everybody's trying to figure this out in these, in cities. Uh, and there, and there have been some that I've seen that have said, you, at a city's event, like First Friday, you could come do that, so that we know they're doing it.
You're saying they could come to the store, Seth?
No, they could bring their product out to the event.
At the tent, we'd have a tent at First Friday, big cooler, in the square.
When they seal, when they sell it, it's still gonna be sealed. Uh, my question, though, would be, if they sell it sealed in a tent, could you walk outside the tent and break it and, and break it open and?
Actually, that would be yes in an event like that.
I don't think you could, well, once you're outside their property, what, they're?
Uh, well, right now, the ordinance allows in a plastic cup, so you could pour it into a plastic cup.
Sure, sure.
Right, is a plastic growler considered a cup and just a little?
Big cup.
No, they're only thirty-two ounces, that's not necessarily big.
I don't remember what, uh, ordinance sized cup is, maybe sixteen or thirty-two.
Just saying.
Question you look a little.
Did it make you say plastic?
Uh, no, there's a limit, it, it, it has a size.
Right, and we could provide those cups with those growlers.
Mr. Griffin?
Hi, Mr. Dyer.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Dyer, you said that you would draft an ordinance for a reading for March. How many readings do we have to have?
Two.
Two. And please help me understand why we can't have the first reading at our next meeting in February, so that we could get this going?
Because you'd have to vote at the work session in March.
Uh-huh.
So.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're waiting until the second meeting in March anyway.
Thank you.
That's up to you, if you want to vote in March, at the work session, but that's not what the policy is.
Well, telling me that we have to have two meetings, and it's not like we have to have three or four.
No, ideally, you, work session voting in one month, it's just.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I want to direct you before I prepare an ordinance.
I just didn't want to prolong this.
Well, there'd actually be an amendment.
Amendment to our, to our.
There'd be an amendment.
An ordinance providing amendments to the ordinance.
Okay. Do you think you have something? Adam D., discussion of payment of annual twenty fifteen gloves commentary assessment in the amount of seventy-eight, thirty-five, seventy-five. I'd say we ought to just move that to our concerned agenda for the next meeting, unless somebody's got any real question on that, because it's not like we've got a real choice in that problem.
Is it, does this amount change every year, or is it always the same?
It's the same.
But we have to do it every year because of the?
I mean, theoretically, it could change, it could change, it hasn't changed this year or twice, but it could change. I think we're doing it the right way, though, here, that way we're not, we're not.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've covered this grum before.
Yeah, we've covered it, we're doing it the right way, do it this way. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that? Next item, discussion of the elimination of base charge on irrigation meters, Mr. Cummins?
Yes, we have two hundred and eleven irrigation meters, and what happens, and it's only on thirty-two of them approximately, is the customer goes away for the winter in order to ba, uh, not pay the minimum base charge, they call up and ask us to shut the irrigation meter off, and when they come back, five months later, or whenever it is, they call us up to turn it back on. And currently, we charge twenty-five dollar fee for turning it back on. Problem is, we lose money on that twenty-five dollars by making two trips in order to turn it off first and then turn it back on. And I'm suggesting possibly that we do one of two things, either A, eliminate the base charge if there isn't zero consumption, and that means zero consumption. One gallon goes through the me, uh, through that irrigation meter, we would assess and charge. That's one option. The second option would be to raise the price of turning on and off, or turning on the meter, we don't charge, turn it off, to save fifty dollars, and this would cover our costs of doing it. And I would suggest that we discuss that, or put something on, or a recommendation for the next meeting.
Anybody have any comments?
I, I just have a question, this is, applies to only to irrigation meters, not, some people actually.
Irrigation.
Some people don't, some people actually turn off their water meters for their home, and they're going for six months?
I would think they would.
So wouldn't the same?
And might, but I would think.
Wouldn't the same thing apply?
Tendency would be to turn it off inside the house more than, yeah.
They have the meter, I think what they're trying to avoid is the twenty-five dollar a month minimum charge or something, I think.
Here's the reason I would, I would prefer the increase in the, in the cost as opposed to the other, that, what's the purpose of having a deposit, a, a, a meter anyway? I mean, what, what's that meter, that deposit and all that for? Why, why do you have, I'm sorry, minimal bill, why do you have that minimal charge anyway? It's for the availability of that water at that location. That's why you got the bottom price there. And so if you've got the availability at your irrigation meter, there ought to be some, in my opinion, some cost, uh, associated with that, because even your water meter, you shut it off, you're paying a minimal bill forever, I mean, you know? You, you shut it off, you still pay a minimal bill, right? Or you don't use any water.
But, but this isn't intended to apply to anybody that wants to shut off their water for six months in Florida or whatever, right? Their regular water, they don't even have an irrigation.
They still have to pay a twenty-five dollar fee now when they turn it back on and they go.
So we're gonna lose money on those too, though, right?
In essence, we have to read.
How many, how many of those do we have, Glenn, do you know?
I don't.
I mean, it, it seems logical, though, for, for losing, we're spending more than twenty-five to turn it back on, we ought to do something different, you know?
Because those are one ons, they call up and say, come read my meter and turn it off, so somebody.
They have to physically do it, they can't do electronically.
As, as you.
It's a physical.
That's great.
Could we just simply run the numbers on both those equations and see what's next to the sense?
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll discuss that a little more at the next meeting, I'm sure. If you have any questions or thoughts about it in the meantime, get in touch with Mr. Cummins. Discussion of the options for the northwest fire station, Mr. Cummins, the construction of, of that fire station.
We went out after last meeting, was suggested that we get an architect proposal, we do have one, and when we started looking at all the options that we have, uh, we really have five options available, for as many might not know this, but we developed extensive plans, I don't know what year it was, and Dean would probably know, but was it two thousand and five or something?
Yes, sir.
Two thousand and five.
I believe that was, when that, Dean, I was here then, when Rick Stewart did it, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
That's in, uh, oh, nine.
Was it oh nine?
Yeah.
But anyway, we paid an extensive amount of money for plans for a fire station. So one of the options we have, if we're gonna use a, do, use an architect, is to tailor those existing plans and take out all of the extra fluff that was in it, the marble and everything else that was in it. That is an option. The, another option is proceed with this architect that has prepared a proposal for us, there are some issues with that that we'll, we have to work out before I present that particular proposal. Another option is we could actually go out and do an RFP and go through all the selection of who's the best architect to use, that has a negative timeframe, but that is an option. We could proceed with current bid, the low bid, as, as we planned. The building has maybe a half a dozen specialty items that are different than standard residential construction. For example, we know the concrete's different, a lot of differences, the decontamination room is different, the oil separation and the drains and the water drains are different, which brings us to the next option, we could proceed with the low bidder and either hire an architect or an engineer to perform two tasks on the low bids designed. The first task would be completely review what's been proposed in those specialty areas, and the second task, like a project manager, to ensure that what is specified is in actuality performed. At the next meeting, we will come back with pros and cons and make a recommendation of how we suggest proceeding with the construction of the fire station.
Okay, Mr. Rest?
Uh, Glenn, the, the fire station that was drawn up a number of years ago, does the footprint of that fire station work on our site?
It was drawn for our site.
Really? Somebody had planned to remove the dirt, I guess, long time ago.
I stand to be corrected, but we spent about seventy thousand dollars as a city for those plans.
If, if that old plan works, that was drawn up, is there anything that, if we had the plans of another station built in another city someplace, we had, somebody reviewed that, was there any reason why we couldn't use that?
Well, you gotta remember, your topography has been designed around a certain size, uh, footprint at the current time, so you, naturally, you couldn't take a fire station plans that exceeded the size of that footprint. I would say that your options relative, if you're gonna use an architect, would be either start from the scratch with one that we go on a professional services basis, rather than the time spent to go out and do an RFP and all that, or take these existing plans and see if they can be value engineered in order to get the, uh, the fire station down to a reasonable cost.
The, the only reason why I brought it up is because I think I mentioned this to you about five or six weeks ago, I called the chief of police, or chief of, fire chief over in Coming, Coming, and he also is the chief for Forsyth County, he's chief of both, and he has a library full of plans, and he offered us, he sent me a plan, I sent it to you, and he offered us to, to come to his library and review any of them, and all of them.
But I understand, even if you got those plans, the site itself.
I understand.
Dictates significant differences in those plans.
I understand.
Might only be usable from the standpoint of the structure.
Right, and the reason why ours were.
Because the concrete and the sizes.
Yeah, I, I know.
Could be entirely different. I, I, I don't know that I.
Well, if you don't want to waste your time. Yeah, I, I understand, but if the plan you got now was designed, was drawn for that site, then that's a, that's a.
That is not, we still need to evaluate.
Thank you.
I, I will say one thing, that, that, my guess is it would need an awful lot of tweaking.
Yeah.
And that was part of the reason that it didn't proceed further, because it was one of those, uh, Taj Mahal type situations where, uh, even the heating, heating and air conditioning or heating, whatever it was, geothermal, I mean, pipes were a hundred thirty degrees of ground, and, I mean, there was a lot, a lot of stuff on there that would, I don't think would affect the fire station, but anyway. Yes, sir?
Could we ask Dean, I'm not, I was on that second meeting as well, seems like we did go through some of that, um.
Yeah, we went, we went through that, we, that bidding process, and we talked about.
I think we, we, we did it back down to.
I don't mean that, we had, went to bed, and it was great.
Didn't we, didn't we go through several things and, and remove a lot of the fluff?
Yes, sir. But the, a lot of the stuff was still left in there. When you look at the building, it has, uh, four or five different color facades and arched doorways, and there's a lot of stuff that could be taken out to lessen the price of it. The building had a police precinct in it, which was, um, about a hundred and forty-four square that will be coming out to shrink the footprint down for that. But there is, there is a very good possibility to value merchantier it down, just with a very few changes to get it down.
Okay, anyone else? Thanks, Chief, appreciate it. I also believe that the reason that it had the police precinct in there was so that we could use, uh, police impact, uh, fee money to help build, help build, I believe that was part of the, okay. All right, next item. We're on E, discussion of the Great Sky add-on permit fees, Mr. Cummins?
Yes, uh, as, we went back to Great Skies, if you remember, we had three steps that we had to go through, and the first was the, uh, declaration that the four streets within the Great Sky area were public streets, and then on January, on December eighteenth, excuse me, uh, if, the motion was made up with, uh, Ms. McGrew, and to accept those, uh, streets for city maintenance. The other issue that we had in there is the add-on permit fee that was being charged to builders to finish those streets, and in discussions with Mr. Dyer, uh, the way that fee was calculated was based on a total number of developed lots and their portion to finish the streets. And he is of the conclusion, correct or wrong, that it might be an unequal way of assessing that add-on fee, that we should consider all houses or all structures in there on any developed lot, and so we'll be coming back at the next meeting and recommending that we reduce the current add-on permit fee from twenty-three eighty-seven to six hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixteen cents. That should take care of the issue relative to the developer, the current developer, uh, has asked for equality in those fees, and that should take care of that particular issue. Am I correct, Mr. Dyer, for you?
Hopefully. I mean, the other option would be to eliminate it.
It makes probably, what, a hundred thousand, I don't have the number right in front of you, Paul, it makes a hundred thousand dollars difference in cost to the city relative to finishing those streets. Right now, we have the responsibility for eventually finishing those streets, and I don't have the exact numbers, but it's gonna cost four hundred and some thousand dollars in order to finish the streets, and this would reduce maybe around by a hundred thousand with these add-on permit fees.
Anyone else comment on that? Ms. McGree?
May I address Mr. Cummins?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cummins, thank you for meeting with me yesterday to explain some things, and would you mind explaining publicly, um, of how streets are put in priority order for maintenance? I think that if we had that, you know, it would be easy to understand.
Well, let's talk LMIG, because LMIG we submit every year.
Excuse me, say that again?
LMIG.
Spell that, please.
L-M-I-G, what's its name, we're named, local.
Local maintenance.
Something very grand.
Improvement grant, local maintenance improvement grant. And we get, I believe it's about a hundred and eighty-six thousand a year, isn't that about right, Nathan?
That's correct.
That's about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year, and we submit to council a list of streets that we think should be addressed in that LMIG grant, and you then vote on whether those streets are the ones to do. So you select the streets relative, there's nothing to say that you can say, well, you've got this street on there that you recommended, but we would prefer to do this street, and I don't know exactly all the rules as to what streets you can substitute and can't substitute, but, uh, it, it does, it does require council approval of the streets that we do finish on that LMIG grant.
Ms. McGree?
And who determines which streets are the, and the priority, and how is that done?
Most of the streets that have needed in prior years have been in the downtown area because they're the oldest streets, and that's been the primary ones. I would say that probably are public works, so we do have a street maintenance list, which I talked to you about, it's old, it goes back to about two thousand and twelve, and it does not contain a hundred percent of our streets, but it does have an evaluation on there of the streets. As I explained to you, the rating of the streets relative to condition is way too subjective today. They have a, a number that they put on it, one through five, with one and two being good, three fair, four and five, I believe, are poor, I'm not exactly sure, but again, that's dependent upon the person looking at the street and rating it. I want to develop this year a objective rating system, and as time permits, update this street. street list so that you'll be able to look at those streets that are the worst ones and should need attention first, based on a, an objective rating system, which we don't currently have. But that's pretty much how it works.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. West?
Glenn, are any of the traffic, I'm sorry, I just addressed someone, I'm asking, Sandy does the right way. Traffic counts, is traffic, are the traffic counts on the streets ever a factor in determining which ones go first, or their order of compare?
I would say yes, that is the case. We just already did North Street all the way to East Main, and that was LMIG, and so-
So that was a factor there, but I-
But that's a factor.
I was just wondering if, like, for instance, Great Sky, if you get a street that's not heavily trafficked, will that push it down the list a little bit?
Well, I think we ought to consider that in the, in the rating system. You got the standard, the current condition, and we ought to look at what the traffic or some sort of traffic flows. Now, that's gonna be a guess, because I don't think you're gonna go, I mean, you could spend the money and go out and do a traffic study on every street and put wires across the street and count, but we know that a dead-end street is gonna have relatively little outside traffic, it's gonna be mainly traffic that belongs on that street versus north and east Maine, that's everybody coming into the city and then going off onto subsidiary streets.
But it, but it's not a factor now, and you're trying to make it more of a factor in future?
I think right now, they look at the worst streets and say, this street needs to be done, and, you know, like, for example, East Cherokee, we know the tractor-trailers go up and down on East Cherokee Street, that's not in very good condition, that had a rating of four, that's probably one that we would recommend to go into LMIG of sixteen, fiscal year sixteen. And, you know, it's, it's much more heavily traffic, or traveled than other streets. Now, some of the other things that we don't have to just look at LMIG, is that eventually there is money in there, in SPOSS money, that from a cash flow basis, it'll be available in probably sixteen and seventeen for some street uses, I don't know how much is committed, but in, in June of sixteen, I believe, we come up with a new SPOSS, or SPOSS seven, if that passes, we should be as a, as a council, as a staff, looking at how much we want to dedicate to finishing streets. And if we get this analysis done, we can do a pretty good estimate of what it would cost to finish the worst streets, and you could prioritize it, and, and then determine, do you want, you also use SPOSS monies in the years after, as assuming it passes, of course.
West?
Don't we have to be a little careful with the SPOSS designation that we designated in a very broad fashion versus a very narrow fashion? You end up with a fire station that you're trying to put a police department in just because this is, the SPOSS designation wasn't for fire safety and safety services, I mean, so we have to be real careful when that does come up.
They're pretty general, but what you gotta be careful of is that you don't put under fire services a very limited amount, and put all the rest in streets because you can't switch mine from streets into fires-
That's, that's what I'm trying to say, we gotta try to prevent it, so we don't get-
It can require planning on your part as a council to determine how, if that SPOSS passes, how you want to allocate that.
No, no, we're gonna ask you for the recommendation.
Well, we'll give you that.
Anything else? All right, discussion to amend the budget to reallocate personnel resources, Mr. Cummins?
Yes. Last year, we took Jovi West out of engineering, and we took that part of engineering with him to Public Works. The assistant director of Public Works retired last year, and we filled that position with a project manager who is now, since Mr. West has left, who is now the current director of Public Works. We are not going to replace the assistant director, and we're gonna take that engineering support that we had with Jovi West and take it back to engineering and hire an engineering technician instead. That is what this proposal, there is no increase in headcount, there's actually, when we get to the end of the year, we'll probably have a decrease in the actual salary and wages cost, where we're going. So it's just a, it's a matter of repositioning where those, where that service, rather than hiring it in Public Works where it could be, but it's, it's better in, it's better in engineering.
Okay. Any other question on that? Okay. Discussion of the employee health insurance renewal, Mr. Cummins?
Yes, if I could ask Mr. Ingram to come up, he's well-versed in the health insurance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for giving me a minute of your time. I always look forward when I can come to council with positive information. In light of the current economic environment, with costs going up, it seems like for everything, day in, day out, I was not, to say the least, looking forward to the insurance renewal, because the city pays approximately eight hundred thousand dollars in insurance, health insurance. So needless to say, the health insurance renewal was a concern of ours. Originally, the brokers came to us and suggested that, or no, I'm sorry, told us that the Blue Cross and Blue Shield plan that we currently have came back initially with a twenty-eight percent increase. That was outrageous, but it was preliminary, without any further negotiations, comparisons with other plans, competitive quotes presented to get them to lower it, and I will have to admit, they did a great job of going to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, bringing with them comparative quotes from other carriers, and they got that with the same plan down to under five percent, at four and a half percent. They went one step further, and they also proposed and discussed with Blue Cross and Blue Shield about changing our plan to an open access plan, and I'll get some of the details on that in just a moment, but in doing that, it would actually bring our overall increase to under one percent. So I applaud them for their work that they've done with, that they did with Blue Cross and Blue Shield in getting our rate renewal down to below one percent. Now, the open access plan that we have proposed to council, there are just a few changes, the vast majority of them been, in my opinion, positive changes. And that summary sheet that we put into your council packets, that very first page, I think does an excellent job of laying out some of the benefits and the one, just the one negative, in our opinion, that the change will affect. Some of the big changes is that our deductibles for the staff will be lowered by approximately thirty percent with the open access plan, a decrease of thirty percent. Current plan is, has a fifteen hundred dollar individual deductible and a three thousand family. The new plan, the recommended plan, the open access plan, will have a deductible of a thousand dollars and a two thousand dollar family deductible. Furthermore, there will no longer be primary care physicians. On your cards, if you look at those now, employees look at those now, we have to declare a primary care physician, we will no longer have to do that, this is open access, you can go to anyone that's on your network. And furthermore, our networks are identical, there's going to be no impact to employees as far as their physician networks, the same networks that they have now, they will have next year. Also, the new open access plan provides for what's called a PPO wrap when you go out of state. If any of y'all have reviewed your current plan, if you go out of state, you almost have to treat it like an emergency room visit, if you become sick. You go, it's, it's cheap to go to the emergency room, because there is no preferred provider network out of state. Well, this new plan changes that, there is now a PPO wrap plan, so when you go out of state, you can go to any doctor that's on network in a Blue Cross, Blue Shield network, and you're treated just like if you were in-state. So that's a positive. The only negative that we present here is the fact that the out-of-pocket maximum increases. The out-of-pocket maximum, if you can recall, after you reach your deductible, you then start paying twenty percent, and your insurance carrier pays eighty percent until you hit a ceiling, that out-of-pocket maximum. The out-of-pocket maximum has increased from our current plan of three thousand dollars individually and nine thousand family to four thousand seven fifty individually and ninety-five hundred family. But when I say that, there's one caveat, that now, under the Affordable Care Act, the rules have changed, and your copays go toward that deductible, effectively almost making it a neutral change. Now furthermore, after, any questions on the medical plan, before I move on to the dental plan?
You might ask, answer the question as to how many people really exceed this out-of-pocket maximum, I don't think it's a very-
It is less than a handful, less than a handful. When we asked the brokers, it was, Lauren, do you remember the exact number, I think it was five, six?
I think it was less than five, sir.
Five or six individuals that actually met their out-of-pocket maximum in two thousand in the prior year, so therefore, they would be the only ones that would, that would have even noticed. On our dental plan, we, in the, the prior year, we went with a different carrier, we went with MetLife. We had been with Guardian Insurance for eleven years prior to that. We've went MetLife, we have, last year, we had had some small issues with some customer service, but beyond that, they were, they were presenting a very small increase. What, Lauren, do you know the percentage increase that MetLife had?
It was five percent.
I think you should write five percent. Our prior carrier, Guardian, came back to us with a neutral, no increase. So we're getting to go back to the Guardian Insurance that we've had for eleven years prior to that, no increase. And furthermore, as it's listed on the summary sheet, all the dental rewards and the rollover features are, will carry on into the new plan, and there are virtually no negatives, no decrease in coverage.
Any questions?
Mr. West?
I just, I have one question, Nathan, are the employees happy with our plan in general?
That may be more appropriate question for Ms. Waters, but I believe they are. I don't have a lot of negative comments.
Okay. Because it looks like what you're doing is improving it without-
Yes, yes, same, virtually same network. When, when you ask employees, are they happy, a lot of times, I think that is going toward the network. Is the doctor that I've been seeing for the past twenty years in that network, and unfortunately, sometimes when you move plans and you move networks, you know, employees have to draw up their longtime doctor and go to a new one, and that's one thing that we take very serious, that we've not wanted to have to happen, and so, and with this, as I mentioned just a minute ago, it's the same network, there's no change. Everyone's doctor that they go to now, they'll be able to go to from here on out.
Anyone else?
Can I, can I ask him a question, since I've got him here now? It's not related, we'll go from healthcare to waste management. I ran into Vic Knight this morning at the Cherokee breakfast, and he asked me if he could come out to River Green and make a presentation about the new recycled containers, so the implementation of that recycled containers is smooth for waste management. My question for you is, you might want to go to Vic and see if other communities like Great Sky and Soleil, whatever, might also benefit from that. So we're gonna implement it with one of our meetings at River Green, he's gonna come out, and he's gonna explain what, exactly what that program is, because all of a sudden, a can's gonna show up there, and people have to figure out what, how the program's gonna work.
Right. Yes, and we, and we have been in discussion with Mr. Knight about how are we gonna reach out to the customers, are we gonna wait till the customers come to us? One of the things we've done is, is posted on the city's website, posting newsletters, try to get that notice out to customers, so you now have the option to have a free larger recycled container. So we'll continue to work with Mr. Knight.
Did we ever figure out what to do with the old ones, are we gonna just recycle them, throw them back in?
Gonna recycle them, use them, keep them, return them.
But they can be recycled, right in that new container?
What do you mean a free larger one?
In the past, we've had, forgive me, not remember the gowns, we had the small totes, the open-top totes, well, now, all customers that want one, they can still use the, those open totes, but now, if they want one, they can receive a ninety-something gallon large receptacle that'll have a different color lid for Forsyth-
Looks just like the other. So does that mean my garbage bill will go down, I'm paying for mine?
I'm sorry?
Oh, no. We've been charging for them, right?
We, yes, we were charging for them.
So is that going away on those that's paying for them? If it's free now?
Yes, yes, that's going away for all the targets.
Ms. McGee?
Is the new larger recycled container on wheels?
Yes.
Actually, it's like your garbage can, so if it's got a yellow-
I don't think so, Vic said it was gonna be a little shorter, Nathan.
Yeah, it is slightly smaller, it's slightly smaller, but it looks-
The footprint is about the same.
You're gonna make two trips to the street.
Yeah.
And I have one, one last question.
Sure.
Did he ever figure out what to do with the recycled points, whatever, I mean, is that gonna, is this paying away?
I think we had decided that we were going to allow people to continue to use those for a year on the site before they closed the program.
Thank you. Thanks, Nathan, appreciate it. Yes. City managers report, Mr. Cummins has something to add.
Yes, Mr. Huffman asked that I bring up, since we had on prior work session, the hiring of a parts and a rights director, I believe he intends with that on the next agenda when he returns, just so that was mentioned here. We do have a job description that we will bring forward.
Had we not already voted, or did we not vote for that, to hire one?
Yeah, but we didn't vote on when, because there was a question, I think Mr. Graham brought it up, whether we do it during this year or the beginning of next budget year, because it will require a budget amendment, and so Mr. Huffman wants to bring it up, and we'll proceed with that.
Since Megan resigned, is there any possible way we can combine those jobs? Do we have to have a full-time mainstream?
I prefer to delay answering that question, um, Ms. Gold and I are getting together tomorrow, and we're talking about mainstream, and we'll be looking at the different options. By and large, I think there's a different skill set in the two functions, and I think if you hired one person that was heavier towards one skill set, the other function would get neglected, that's my personal opinion, but Ms. Gold and I are gonna be talking about that tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, anything else? Okay. The other, I have a couple items I wanted to mention. Number one, as Ms. McGee reminded me, to let everyone know that this weekend, it's Saturday, February the seventh, at six P.M., is the Gospel Fest, which is the fifth annual, I believe, and that will be at the Arts Center, so everyone that can, please come out, I know Richard's been sending out emails, I've got a few of those regarding that.
It's free, it's free too, man.
A free event, yeah, no charge. Anything you want to add?
We do accept donations.
It's a great event.
Yes.
Extremely entertaining.
Very entertaining, it is, absolutely. Okay. The other thing I wanted to mention was, as, as most of you know, the council met last night, or yesterday afternoon, was turned into a little longer meeting than I thought, but it, we were out of there by six something, and regarding the issue that's been going rapid regarding the Board of Education building and the historical properties on the historical register and so forth, and the, the council, you know, probably the last thing we'd like to see is for the Board of Education to move out of downtown, we want them to stay downtown, there's no doubt, I think. And yet, we felt like we, in order to further the discussion, that if indeed, that, and we have, we have sent a letter to the Board of Education, which we did not want to say anything about it until we knew that they had had adequate time to get it and, and to begin their discussion, which I'm assuming could, could be, this work session, they're maybe in now, I'm not sure, or they're maybe in a regular meeting. But in essence, what it said was, should the Board of Education decide that moving out of town was their, what they were going to do, then the, the city has some acreage on the, on the Bus Parkway, around the reservoir, that we would consider basically trading some- basically trading some property of that, some of our property there for the property that they have out here, which, uh, would be, uh, from our benefit, we, would be some really, uh, we could preserve the buildings and get those into the hands of the Historical Society or the DDA or whomever, uh, but the property itself would be a nice parking area and potential parking deck at some time in the future maybe, uh, for the city. And it is on the main street level, it's not, you know, down a hill that you have to climb to get, to get up here to, and, uh, and we've all heard a lot of the merchants and so forth complaining particularly about parking, you know, so that would, would help. But like I said, the, the essence of, of the letter was that, uh, if it's their decision that they were going to, to leave, then we would certainly, uh, you know, want to entertain that as a possibility of a land swap or something like that. Uh, and I have asked our city clerk to send to each, uh, tonight, to each of the media that we normally distribute everything to, a copy of that letter, which by the way was signed unanimously by the full council, even Mr. Huffman of us was there too, so, uh, everyone has signed that letter and, uh, so we, it was done in good faith and, uh, you know, we, we really anticipate whatever the best outcome needs to be for this city, but I hope that's, uh, that's what we've achieved and I believe we would. Okay.
One other announcement, um, I should have done this here.
Okay, that's fine, go ahead.
Um, I talked to the theater manager, you want me to, uh, rep, just remind everyone that we're going to have a great movie next weekend, Gone With the Wind's going to be at the Kent Theater, goes Friday and Saturday nights and 10 dollars is, is the price, but our concessions probably make up for that because they're like a dollar apiece. So anyway, great movie, hope you all.
I actu- I actually saw Gone With the Wind in that theater, believe it or not, when it came out, you know? It was, uh, that wasn't a movie, that was, that was, I don't, Richard, you may have been there, I don't know. Now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, unless somebody else had anything. All those, all those.